Hi, everybody. Good evening and welcome. Welcome to this public information session. My name's Christine Brown. I'm a 28-year resident of Fairfield and currently serving as Chief of Staff to the First Selectman. I want to thank you all for coming to this very important discussion on a project which is of huge significance to the town of Fairfield and the city of Bridgeport. That being, United Illuminating's proposal to move their transmission lines off the poles adjacent to the Metro North train tracks and onto newly installed and incredibly tall poles that run along the north side of the tracks. The town held a public information session on this topic back in October, and we asked UI to present their proposal to the community. Tonight is different. Tonight, we will hear from our own community leaders on where this proposal stands today and what we see as our next steps forward. Most of you know that this project has been very controversial. The current administration takes this issue very seriously and believes there are many reasons why this project, as proposed, is not in the best interest of our town. This evening, we'll hear from three speakers on the panel who will give you some background on the project, explain the status of our current legal appeal, and talk about your rights as a resident. Following their remarks, we'll have time for question and answer. So I'd now like to introduce our panelists and our special guests. First, we're going to hear from Bill Gerber, our First Selectman. Bill has been involved in this issue even before he took office and has been aggressively advocating for our town in this fight. Next up will be David Ball, a partner in Conan Wolf. David has over 20 years' experience dealing with utilities and has been instrumental in our success to date. Steve Ozik and his wife Andrea, along with David Parker, a local architect, founded and organized SNETI, the Sasko Creek Neighbors Environmental Trust, when they found out what UI was planning. And they've been leaders in organizing and mobilizing support, and Steve is joining us on the panel tonight to share his insights. Here in Fairfield, we are represented in the Connecticut General Assembly by three representatives and one senator. And all four of these legislators are in session tonight in Hartford, and unfortunately, they can't be here. But they've been heavily involved in this issue right from the start. Representative Jennifer Leeper from Fairfield and Representative Steve Staffstrom from Bridgeport have been negotiating with Governor Lamont on a bill to reform the Siting Council and the entire application process, which we hope will come up for a vote this session. In their absence, First Selectman Gerber will give you an update on what that legislation might include. We also have several other people with us tonight, sitting in the front row, who are working on this campaign and are available to answer questions. We have David Parker, a local resident and architect, Stephanie Coakley, the Executive Director of Pequot Library, Paul and Laura Whitmer. Whitmer, I'm sorry, Minister at Southport Congregational, Harry Schmitz, Senior Wardent at Trinity Episcopal Church, Sabrina Smeltz, the CEO of Wakeman Boys and Girls Club, and Phil Pierce from Conan Wolf, who's our town attorney. We also have several people joining us from Bridgeport who were in this fight with us. Christina Smith from Groundwork Bridgeport, Sliver by the River, Mace the Tisdale from the Freeman Houses, Kathy Mayer from Barnum Museum, Gail Robinson from Ash Creek Conservancy, Kevin Moore from the South End Neighborhood Revitalization Zone, or NRZ, Vanessa Lyle from Westside NRZ, Greg Simon from Blackrock NRZ, and Andy Toledo from Bridgeport NRZ, Mark Bilyani from Artist Lofts, John Hayden from Mongers Market, Carl McClusker from Shiloh Baptist Church, and Sergio Faria from Free Methodist Church. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bill Gerber, our First Selectman.
Thank you very much. I'm really heartened to see so many people show up tonight. This is fantastic. We're a community that really cares. It cares about the environment. It cares about each other. I'm just going to give my perspective on some of the history, where we are now, and then I'm going to leave a lot for David Ball, who is an unbelievable expert who's going to take over after me. So I think we all agree that we need sufficient and reliable power. There's no doubt about that. But at the same time, no one wants a power company digging, clearing, chopping down trees, and erecting massive ugly structures in their backyard. Nobody wants to be forced to accept the value for permanent easements on their property, put forward by a utility, or to spend their own savings to hire an attorney to fight a Goliath, like UI, in court to preserve their property rights or to dispute what the fair value of their property is. Most of us do understand that there are times when the needs of society outweigh personal property rights, and that, on rare occasions, can lead to eminent domain. However, this process with United Illuminating and the massive monopoles it planned to erect along the south side of the railroad tracks through Southport's historic district, along the Post Road, through the Grassmere area, and into historic areas of Bridgeport, has made it clear to many, including myself, that just because a utility company claims a project plan is for the greater good, that doesn't necessarily make it so. We appear to have lost the balance between property rights and the greater good with utility companies' influence acting like a thumb on the scale in favor of their own convenience and profits. Members of the Connecticut General Assembly are currently working on legislation to help rebalance. Unfortunately, or I should say fortunately, Bridgeport's Stephen Staffstrom and Fairfield's Jennifer Leeper and others who are working on this and hope to be here tonight, maybe stuck in Hartford for the duration of tonight's meeting. For reasons that I have no greater insight into than any other person in this auditorium, the Connecticut Siting Council has played a role in fostering the current imbalance. It is a state regulatory agency that is jurisdiction over, among other things, the siting of electric transmission lines and substations. Their stated mission is to balance the need for adequate and reliable public utility services at the lowest reasonable cost to consumers with the need to protect the ecology and environment of the state. It is our position that they have failed in this duty for reasons that form the basis of our appeal to the Superior Court and about which we, and especially David Ball, will discuss tonight. We asked, was the size and scope of this project necessary to supply the electric power needs of Connecticut residents into the foreseeable future? Our experts have shown us that the answer is no, and UI admitted as such. This fact appears to have been completely ignored by the Siting Council. What will happen to so much excess transmission capacity created from this project? The benefit will likely accrue to UI and its bottom line by selling it on to other states, like New York. Given this, was the plan to take 19.25 acres of permanent easements, clear-cutting trees, installing as many as 100 monopoles ranging from 95 feet to 195 feet tall, and that correlates to about a 10- to 14-story commercial building, which is more than double the size of any building in Fairfield? Was that justified? We said absolutely not. We asked, were the affected property owners notified about the project in a way that would allow them to understand the potential negative impacts to their property? United Illuminating said yes. They posted notices at the train station and sent out some notifications by mail. The Siting Council agreed with them. Yet few property owners recall receiving any notices at all, and those that do recall seeing something remember only rosy descriptions about capacity and greater resiliency. Who would ignore a notice informing them that use of their land could become restricted through permanent easement? Clearly, the current notification standards are not truly meant to notify. The legislation currently under discussion in Hartford addresses this. Was UI required to vacate the Metro North right-of-way, causing them to move on the private property? UI made it seem that way, but when asked directly, the Department of Transportation said otherwise. This was not put forward at DOT's request. We asked, were there any viable alternatives to this massive monopole project? How about undergrounding? How about undergrounding the lines? United Illuminating claims the cost would be well over $1 billion to underground 7.3 miles of transmission lines. Yet UI would not produce the calculations for what sounds like the highest undergrounding cost per mile in history, and the Siting Council did not require them to do so. A recent article in the New York Times entitled "The U.S. Urgently Needs a Bigger Grid: Here's a Fast Solution" discusses new technology that allows for greater transmission capacity by replacing lines with a new, higher-capacity material without requiring a huge infrastructure build. The article points out that because of the way in which utilities are compensated, they often have more financial incentive to build new infrastructure rather than upgrade existing equipment. Surprisingly, not a single member of the Siting Council voted for United Illuminating's proposal to run these lines to the south of the Metro North tracks. But even more surprising was that on February 15th of this year, the Siting Council voted to issue the Certificate of Environmental Compatibility and Public Need, in other words, the permit, for an alternative, a route on the north side of the tracks. They did so with little, if any, information about where the poles would be placed, how tall they would be, how many acres of deforestation, permanent and temporary easements would be required. Referred to as the Hanan-Morriset Alternative, named after two Siting Council appointees, four council members voted in favor, one opposed, and two abstained. United Illuminating told members of the press that the route would require 22 acres of permanent easements from private property owners. But how they knew that without an actual plan, we don't know. One additional point about alternatives. United Illuminating was asked about siting its transmission lines to the north of the tracks during the hearings. They responded that this was not a viable alternative. Since they are now developing a plan to do just that, it calls into question the accuracy of other parts of their public testimony. So where are we? The town is working with other organizations, Sasko Creek Neighbors Environmental Trust, or as we lovingly call them, SNETI, Trinity Episcopal Church, Southport Congregational Church, the Pequot Library Association, Wakeman Boys and Girls Club, and others. It is important for all of us to stay involved and vocal until this is fully resolved. It matters a lot to our town. The town has filed an appeal with the Connecticut Superior Court. David Ball from Conan Wolf, who is our town attorney, who, Conan Wolf is our town attorney and works with Phil Pierce, our town attorney, is here and will discuss the potential timing and implications. Let Steve Ozik talk about SNETI's appeal, and other interviewers should discuss theirs as well. What's next? UI will be doing their due diligence and planning over the course of the next nine to 12 months. They expect to get to 30% engineering of the project like the first quarter of 2025 for Fairfield. And at that time, they'll make their plan public. But we've been warned that that 30% may go to 100% in a very short period of time, so you can't breathe easy at 30%. As for Bridgeport, they say they're already at about 90% of engineering, so they're much further along, unfortunately. UI's contractor, Cornerstones, is contacting Fairfield Area Abutters as part of their due diligence process. They want soil samples to take measurements, et cetera. Property owners do have a right to refuse entry onto the property, and that is an individual choice, and we'll discuss that in a bit as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to David.
Thank you. Hopefully, my booming voice in this microphone won't overwhelm everybody, but I'll do the best I can. So this was truly a unique, a unique application. I've litigated for, really, for decades, power line cases representing municipalities in opposition to Eversource and UI. And in every one that came before this one, the basis for the plan was that there was an increased need for capacity, which you would expect in our society and in Connecticut, which is growing. You would certainly expect those things. And invariably, the battle would be over some other issue, location, siting, and ultimately whether we can bury the power lines underground, which just about every municipality, for good reason, prefers. This is different. This is a situation where UI is coming to the Siting Council saying, "We don't have a need for any more electricity. None. Today, no need. But we do 10-year projections into the future, and we have no need for added electricity 10 years into the future." So what is this about? This is about, according to UI, the catenary structures that you see along Metro North Railroad. These are these sort of inverted U's. And the claim is that, oh, they're old. They're so old. Some of them were actually built at the beginning of the 20th century, neglecting to share that the vast majority of them were built in the 1990s. We really question whether there's any need at all for this project other than to help UI overcome its own financial difficulties. One of the, one of the most disturbing things to me about the way the Siting Council proceedings went was a bit of an assumption that if UI says there's a need, there's a need, and it shouldn't be that way. There wasn't adequate evidence to support the need for this project, and I'll just ask you a question to think about. How is it that Metro North Railroad intends to continue operating with the exact same catenary structures that power the railroad, and they're okay with it, but UI isn't? Do we think for one second Metro North Railroad is going to jeopardize its passengers because of decrepit infrastructure or those catenary structures falling down? Not a chance. So there's an illogic to this entire proceeding unless you accept the fact that there is a profit for UI in this. The more they build, the more money they make. The bigger the transmission line, the more that electricity they can transmit, let's say to New York State, the more money they make. Does it benefit us? Not one bit. Not a bit. But it benefits them. So we challenge need before the Siting Council. As I said, Siting Council accepted UI's explanation. The other component of this that I will say is extraordinary. I have worked on a number of these cases. I have never been defending a municipality where the proposal is to take 19 acres of permanent easements over private and municipal property. And to compound that, a significant percentage of the takings will be, or would be, over the Southport Historic District and over historic properties that are absolutely precious. I had one matter, defending the town of Wilton, God knows how many years ago, over 20 years ago. The Cannondale Historic District was going to be impacted by a CLMP overhead transmission line, and ultimately, the result was burying the line. Not the entire line, but burying about half of it to preserve that historic district. And yet, UI was absolutely resistant to any undergrounding. The proceedings at the Siting Council, I thought, exposed the weaknesses in this project. Because, as Bill correctly stated, the statute which governs is called PUESA, P-U-E-S-A, and it's an environmental protection statute. It was enacted in the 1970s, and the purpose is to not simply allow the utilities to build transmission lines wherever they want. It was a recognition that environmental concerns, aesthetic concerns, cultural, scenic, historic concerns are of equal merit and equal consideration, and that balancing is everything. Balance the need for new electricity on the one hand with environmental impact on the other. Okay? This balancing, from our perspective, should have been enough to simply reject this application because UI is coming in and saying, "Oh, we've got to have 19 more acres of easements." And yeah, they're going to be over historic districts. That should have been game over, particularly when there's no need for the electricity. And I will say, the Siting Council, to their credit, was listening. I don't think it's fair to say that this was rubber stamped. I don't think that's what happened. I think that the town deserves credit for the fight it put up, and grassroots groups deserve credit because ultimately, the Siting Council did get the message that building an overhead transmission line to the south of the Metro North Railroad tracks in a manner that would encroach on the historic district was unacceptable, and there was no support on the council for that. And that is a victory for this town. It is a victory. The problem is, as Bill described it, what happened, what should have happened, let me, let me start with that, is they should have rejected the application and allowed UI to come back with a fully developed plan. If the Siting Council's inclination is, we think that the northern side of the railroad tracks is a more appropriate location for an overhead line, then it should have been denied without prejudice, the application, and UI should have spent the two years they claim they now need to spend to develop and design this line and come back with a full-blown application. That's not what the Siting Council did. Two of its members, in good faith, thought that it would be better for the town. I am convinced that they were trying to help in this respect, that by moving it to the north of the Metro North Railroad tracks, that that would at least preserve the historic areas. I will give the council credit for that. But to simply grant a certificate without any evidence doesn't work. That violates the statute. So remember, the whole idea here is you're supposed to balance the need for electricity with environmental impact. How can you do that balancing if there is no evidence in the record about the impacts to the properties to the north? No evidence as to the extent of easements that may be necessary to the north? No evidence about encroachments? Am I having trouble with my mic? Closer, better. First time anyone has ever asked me to speak louder. The failing in this, in this docket is that there was absolutely no way that the Siting Council could have engaged in the statutory balancing that it needs to do without a fully designed plan by United Illuminating that spells out environmental impact, scenic impact. We don't know how high these poles are going to be. How about, how many poles? We have no idea. How about the route? We have a general sense it'll be to the north. The kernel of the idea of the Hanan-Morriset Alternative, it's fine. If you think you can't bury the line, which I strongly disagree with, then have UI come back with a fully developed design. They're doing it backwards. Instead, they're saying, "We're going to grant you a certificate, and while the appeals play out in court, you work on the design. It's already approved." So essentially, our voices have been taken away from us. Imagine being a property owner to the north. You haven't had an opportunity to contest this, to appear before the Siting Council, to express your concern and opposition. And I will suggest to you, that is because the Siting Council violated due process. And our appeal makes that point. We have two fundamental arguments on appeal. One is they never engaged in the statutory balancing that they are required to do, nor could they, because there was no evidence. And two, that the due process rights of the town, particularly Abutters to the north, have been violated. I have not, in my experience, seen an application for a certificate approved in this matter. I have never seen an application approved where the utility has not even designed the plan that was approved, let alone presented the environmental impact. So as we're going into this, I understand the deference that state court judges will, will provide to the Siting Council and a state administrative agency. In my opinion, this is a clear violation of PUESA. It is a due process violation, and we intend to appeal not just to the Superior Court. Hopefully, we win there. If we don't win there, we will keep appealing because ultimately, I have faith in our judicial system to stop what just happened. Okay? So we can, I don't want to take up any more time with sort of the, the legal process. The case has just been filed. We filed it in March. The intervenors, SNETI has filed an appeal, City of Bridgeport filed an appeal, BJ's filed an appeal, I believe, Southport Congregational Church as well, Pequot Library. And my expectation, probably the Superior Court, we have a conference in a few weeks, will probably consolidate everything so just to create some order. And it's going to play out over the next six to nine months of briefing and eventually oral argument, and then we'll get a decision within a few months. So it's, I look at it as a one-year horizon on appeal, give or take. So with that, the one thing I want to emphasize is that it is impossible for an attorney to defend an application like this without the support of the people who live in the town and without grassroots support. And the successful oppositions are ones like this. And this town has stepped up remarkably. I give Steve Ochik and Andrea Ochik enormous amount of credit for helping form SNETI and, and really providing the day-to-day work to fight this and shine a light on what was happening in this town. And so I want to turn it over to Steve, and he can talk about his efforts. Thank you.
Actually, can I make, about, about the Ozyks and SNETI and David Parker, who they brought on? I don't know where we'd be if you guys hadn't done that because they, they brought together, they, the coalition, they hired a good lawyer, started the process, and, you know, before, before we were able to get David Ball on board, you know, they had a good lawyer already working, and I just, we owe them a debt of gratitude.
Thank you for that. But honestly, thank you for, for David Ball. So if anybody had the opportunity to listen to him and to watch him in some of the proceedings, he was masterful. Bill has been amazing from before he was elected, all the way, you know, through this entire process. He has honored every single thing that he said he was going to do, and you cannot ask for more than that from an elected official. So, you know, our hats are off to you, honestly. Thank you. So for those of you who don't know who the Sasko Creek Neighbors Environmental Trust is, which is a mouthful, and it's even harder to write on a check, so just write "SNETI." We were formed, you know, in a hurry. So, you know, like everybody else, we were relatively uninformed. We were very late to the party. We showed up on a call on, you know, the end of July, getting ready to go on vacation, and a gentleman, John Bowen, I believe, brought up concern around the historical, you know, nature of Southport and the uniqueness of the community. And he said, you know, "You really can't just, you know, destroy the environment by putting up 120 to 145-foot monopoles." And quite frankly, I didn't really fully get that they were going to be 120 or 145 feet. So we go on vacation, we write letters. We come back, and our neighbor tells us that they're cutting down trees in our, in his backyard, and they're going to do it in ours next because, you know, that Illuminating is taking property. I said, "That can't be. Can't possibly be." So we investigated. We got onto the website. And to the UI credit, they put a lot of information online. And we got into the maps. And when we looked at the maps, we saw in fact that they were not taking our property. But when you really zoom in on it and you go, you know, 400% zoom on a, on a digital map, and you start going down the train line, you start to see that they are taking many of our neighbors' property. of our neighbors' property. And then they're taking the Pequot Library property, and then they're taking the church's lot, property, and then they're taking these historic homes. And then they're taking property that actually cuts homes in half. And then you go down our vibrant commercial district that runs right down the Post Road, and half of our commercial district is got property being taken from it. Large swaths of property. And so this really quickly brought us became a property rights issue. Property rights are, you know, they're, one of our fundamental rights as Americans, and one of our jobs is, you know, as a government, is to protect our property. And it just immediately felt like maybe our government was failing us. So we had a, you know, a quick meeting. Andrea and I got on the phone with Jennifer Leeper, who was very responsive, and she came back to us with the name of a lawyer, and that lawyer said, "Form a 501(c)(3), hire a lawyer, and then go to the town and try and get them to file as an intervenor as well. But you do not have a second to spare. If you do not file as an intervenor in the next three days, you will be shut out of the process forever." And it was a three-day sprint. And I will be completely candid, the town of Fairfield, first electman Brenda Kupchak, came around pretty quickly, and she filed as an intervenor. A lot of the businesses that we talked to filed as intervenors to prevent, to preserve their rights, and we got a group going. David Parker was our secret weapon. So David Parker is a historical architect. He's a brilliant, brilliant architect. He's a preservationist at heart. And he crafted a variety of images to scale that are accurate and in fact are jarring when you see them. And they bring to life what was happening in Southport for everybody who might, in the future, walk through town and envision it. And that was super helpful because it allowed us to get five key groups together, the Pequot Library, the Southport Congregational Church, Trinity, the Southport Conservancy, and Sasquatch Nod. And those five organizations have thousands of people, and they mobilized. And that is the same kind of thing that we're looking to do here tonight. We are looking to preserve our land rights. That is what's at stake here. It's not just our community, it's the property that we've all, you know, come to know and expect to be part of, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, our neighbors and our friends. Their property is being taken. It's being taken and it's being transferred to a private company. And that private company is domiciled in a foreign country. So just to repeat it, like this is how offensive it is, they're taking property from American citizens, and they're transferring it to a foreign entity, and we are paying for that transfer. We're paying for that transfer, and there's something fundamentally wrong with that. And it's, that is, that is the, you know, biggest offense of this entire process. We don't like tall poles. We don't like the visual aesthetic that it brings. But there were tall poles that were put on DOT property in the 1990s, and we've been living with them for 35, 40 years, and nobody really complains about it. And, you know, if they decided that they were going to do a rebuild as characterized on their original sketch, nobody would have said a thing. It's when they took property from churches, from daycare centers, from libraries, from individuals, and they took it from our historic, you know, communities, that it's absolutely offensive. In Bridgeport, this offense is three times the offense that it is in Fairfield. It's three times as egregious because it's not just along the DOT corridor. They've actually moved completely across the street, and the easement is twice as wide in Bridgeport. And their economic vitality of their downtown community is far more impacted than ours is. It's horrific. The second part in Bridgeport is that it's not just one set of circuits that they're rebuilding, they're doing it twice. So they double the offense. That offense is on the south side, and it's on the north side. And these are our neighbors in Bridgeport. This is downtown property that is absolutely vital to the revitalization of downtown Bridgeport, to the preservation of historic properties like the Freeman Properties, like Shiloh Baptist Church, the United Methodist Church. There are businesses where, you know, people invested their lives and their life savings in revitalizing downtown properties that were completely derelict and defunct, and they brought them back to life. They breathed new life into them. So Michael Valani, where are you? You're out here somewhere. Michael Valani has breathed new life into a beautiful building in downtown Bridgeport. That building was completely derelict. It was completely neglected. Today, it is filled with artists. They are creating beautiful works of art on a daily basis. They are completely oversubscribed. It's a vibrant business. John Hidden has revitalized Monger's Market. And if anybody spent a Sunday afternoon at Monger's Market, they're going to say, "Wow, this place is amazing." But these two businesses are now under threat because their property is being taken, and it's going to severely impact their ability to continue to create a going concern there. So our two communities are linked together here in this struggle. So it's a single docket. The, you know, the fact that they moved it to the north side has bought us a little bit of time, but UI is moving very swiftly in Bridgeport to try and move this project forward in Bridgeport because they have an approved certificate. And so anything that we can do to support them in their effort to stand together and to unite under a common cause is in all of our best interest because we have a, we have a common enemy. And that common enemy is an abusive, foreign-owned utility company that doesn't respect the sovereignty of our own property. And that's the original sin. So the call to action tonight from our organization, which is a grassroots organization, we're not funded by the town, we love and support what the town is doing, they have hired an amazing attorney, which is defending us. But our call to action is, there is legislation that is underway. That legislation is aimed at reforming the Siding Council process. So this super-heavy-handed process that, you know, Attorney Ball and Bill highlighted in terms of the way in which the rules kind of are tipped and favored in terms of the utilities, and they're really, you know, silencing the silent majority of people who are impacted. That process can be reformed. It can be reformed through legislation. And our legislators have come together. They've introduced numerous bills, which have recently been consolidated. They have a variety of key reforms in there, including notification, but also including things like providing experts so that they can debunk some of these outrageous claims, like a billion dollars for bearing lines. So those reforms will change the game. And the way that I want you to think about it is think about it like a basketball game. If we're one team and we're the, you know, we're the town of Fairfield and the city of Bridgeport on one team, and United Illuminating is on the other team, that game is refereed by the Siding Council. And the Siding Council has been using a referee manual and says every time UI fouls us, they get two shots. And every time we foul them, United Illuminating gets two shots. And so you can, you can pretty easily see that we're at a huge disadvantage when the Siding Council, which are the referees in this struggle, do something as egregious as that, but that's how the rules are kind of set up right now. And so if we change those rules, we have a very good chance, when we win the appeal, and I am confident we will win the appeal, when we win the appeal and we get a second bite at the apple, that is when the Siding Council reforms will be to our advantage. But they can't be to our advantage unless we get this through. So this is on the docket right now. It gets voted on on March 8th. We have a QR code, or, I'm sorry, yeah, May 8th. Thank you. Yeah, May 8th. I'm still living in the past. There's a QR code that is on the UI flyers that we have around. Just snap it with your phone. We use something called One Click Politic. It makes it really easy to send a letter to all of your legislators and to the governor, letting them know that you support the legislation. So we are looking for the support. We're looking for hundreds, thousands of emails. Send them to all of your friends all over the state of Connecticut. If you've got a friend in Canton, Connecticut, send it to them and ask them to vote. Ask them to one-click it and, you know, get their voice, support us in this cause. But that's really the call to action. Sneddy is a grassroots organization. We are made up of volunteers. We are always looking for volunteers. And, you know, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is a great turnout, and it's great to see so many people, you know, energized by this. So, thank you.
Steve, David, and Bill, thank you so much. That was, I hope for all of you in the audience, I hope that was great background and great explanation. And now we'd like to turn it over to you. So if you want to ask a question or make a comment, we have a standing mic over here. Please, so maybe, oh, okay, if somebody wouldn't mind putting that in the aisle. Come on down to the mic. If anybody wants to ask a question, come on down to the mic. We're giving everybody three minutes for a public comment or question, and we'll take questions up to nine o'clock, at which time we'll wrap up. I just want to ask everybody to remember to please keep your questions and comments directed to the topic at hand, and as usual, let's keep our discussion respectful and focused on sharing information. I also want to mention that the people in the front row, who represent interveners and organizations involved in this issue, can also answer questions, or, you know, if you have a question about how this is going to impact Wakeman, for instance, the CEO of Wakeman is here, she could answer that question. So feel free to ask about, ask questions, not just to the members of the panel, but also of the other interveners who are in the audience. Thank you.
My name is Don Irian. I live on Beach Road in Fairfield.
I'm sorry, Don. They did ask me to mention, you need to speak within like an inch or two of the microphone in order for that microphone to pick you up.
My name is Don Irian. I live on Beach Road in Fairfield. I have a question for Mr. Ball. With all the different parties involved with the action against the Siding Council, can you tell, explain how the whole defense, our defense is being organized in support of both the town as an entity, as well as the various groups involved, they're actively involved, like Steve's?
Yes, thank you. And it's a good question because one of my views is that there ought to be as much unity as possible in opposing this. And as Steve said, Sneddy had hired Mario Coppola, a very good lawyer, and we worked very closely with him throughout in the Siding Council process. And my expectation is that we'll continue to do so. The City of Bridgeport, I was pleased, filed an appeal, making the same arguments that we are making. So I see unity there. Now, any given property owner may have unique issues that are specific to that property owner, which I also understand and would expect that owner to raise. But what we are doing is really, up until this point, we have certainly coordinated. I do expect we would take the lead on the appeal, but we have a very competent counsel that we'll work with. It's a good question.
So just to build on David's question, because our attorney, Mario Coppola from Virgil and Moses, he is still involved. He's very active. He speaks to us on a regular basis. He represents Sneddy and a number of the actual individual interveners. Chris Russo in town represents a lot of individual interveners as well. Obviously, Lee Hoffman in Bridgeport. Brian Spears represents Southport Congregational Church as well. They all talk, and it's a unified and coordinated effort. There's a reason Mario is not here tonight, and it's because he just, quite frankly, costs too much to have here. And we're trying to conserve our legal resources for the fight that we bring on appeal and in front of, you know, the Siding Council or a Superior Court judge, or potentially even a Supreme Court judge. So we are trying to conserve those resources, as I'm sure as, you know, many of the other interveners. The town has provided what we think is outstanding counsel, and so all of our attorneys have really leaned on David to take lead in terms of running at the appeal. But they're still working and they're still in support.
You are a very quiet group. Does anybody else have a question?
My name is Hector Keen. I'm in Southport. I'm actually on the north side. And I think it's great what you're doing. And one of the things that maybe we need a little more understanding is, if I want to put solar panels in my house, I would probably very likely be denied. I wouldn't be able to do that. So it is outrageous that UI, whether it's on the north or the south side of the tracks, that they are allowed to actually run their wires exposed through a historic district. I know that goes without saying, but how do they get this immunity?
We were surprised, and I'm new to this issue, and I was surprised about how utilities have power to override many local regulations, including have different wetlands regulations that they have to abide by. It is pretty amazing, so I wouldn't disagree with you in any way.
And I'll just, just to put a fine point on that, the statute does override local zoning laws, wetlands, conservation. So the statute is set up to give all power to the Siding Council in a siding decision. And that's okay in concept if the council is doing its job of balancing environmental impact, aesthetic impact with the need for the project. And I simply think they got it wrong here. But, you know, some of the legislation, I've not been involved particularly in the legislation that's percolating, but I do think it's quite important, as Steve said, because there needs to be, I think, a rebalancing of the approach here. There's far too much deference paid to the utility in this process. I've seen it for years, and I don't think it's getting better. And there needs to be more of an emphasis on the impact to municipalities when you're talking about high-power transmission lines. I understand the frustration.
I think that's a, you know, I have a slightly different view on utilities because they're monopolies, and they're no longer monopolies that are mistfully held. So when these monopolies were created, you know, in 1890, whatever, or 1910, they were owned by local people. You know, Bridgeport created a monopoly because they didn't want five sets of wires and five telephone poles running up and down. It didn't make sense to build five times the amount of infrastructure to support the very thing. And so they said, "Let's create a monopoly, and let's have it tightly regulated, and let's have it owned by people who live there," and still kind of regulate it themselves. And that makes a lot of sense. I think that's how it all started. And it's been corrupted slowly over many, many years. And the Siding Council, same thing. We went through deregulation where they sold the power companies to private companies. So, they went from municipally-held entities to privately-held entities. And when that happened, they said, well, we probably need a stronger organization who can balance this, you know, highly competitive, larger market of privately-held companies that are all going to be competing with each other. Let's, we know they're after profit. So, it went from monopoly, no profit, serve the public good, to for-profit utilities. And then, it got a little wonkier because those utilities were sold to foreign entities. So, now we have foreign entities that own local utilities. They still have those legacy laws. They still have those legacy protections of monopolies. And they use that, and it's not been taken away from them. And the Siding Council should be playing a much, much more impactful role on regulating that, and they don't do it. And that's my opinion. So, that's why I think we have this problem.
Hi, my name is Sue Prescott, and I'm in Southport as well. My question is, you know, we're talking about whether it's the south side or the north side where the lines, at the end of the day, the end game is bury the lines. So, I guess my question is, United Illuminating, is there precedent in the state of Connecticut or elsewhere where they have buried the lines? And why aren't, you know, can we use that as an example, or are we already and we just don't know about it? Thank you.
Yeah, everyone wants to talk on this. So, I agree 100%, 100%. You know, there are different voltages. There's 345 kilovolts is sort of the mega transmission line, and there was real concern 20 years ago about whether they could be buried and still be reliable. And now, despite the utilities kicking and screaming, we see underground lines of 345 kilovolts without a problem, buried for extensive 10, 12 miles. This is 115 kilovolts. There has never been a question about the reliability of a 115 KV line being buried. So, what happened here, which in my view was terrible, was that UI inflated the cost of undergrounding to scare the Siding Council into rejecting it as an alternative. And it was, in my view, disgraceful to put numbers on it. The Connecticut Siding Council issues reports on what the typical cost would be for an underground mile. And for a 115 KV line, my recollection was somewhere in the $21 to $27 million per mile range, which if you extrapolate out the nine miles that were being buried, would get you probably around $200 million, maybe a little higher. What UI was telling the Siding Council is that it would cost more than $100 million for every mile, equating to a $1 billion project. The Siding Council went, can't do that. Understandably, the problem is, UI never produced a single document to substantiate those numbers. When the interveners sought that information in discovery, UI objected, the Siding Council did not require them to produce the information. The numbers are inflated. The solution here is to bury the lines. You always want to bury the lines under public roads, which are already contaminated, rather than pristine land. And I totally agree, that should be the result. And yes, there's precedent. I can think of a number of examples, but there was one where UI and CLMP jointly filed an application for what at the time was the longest transmission line in Connecticut history, may still be about 70 miles from Norwalk to Middletown, and half of that line is buried from Norwalk to Bridgeport. That was a joint application by UI, CLMP, and that was a 345 KV line. We brought that to the Siding Council's attention. Many of the folks on the Siding Council were on the council. When I litigated that for a number of towns, it didn't matter. They were scared off by the billion-dollar price tag, and it should not have been that way.
Yeah, I completely agree with what David's saying on this. One thing that I will add to it, there's, so, it doesn't always make sense to bury power lines. It can be more expensive. It definitely makes sense to bury power lines in highly-dense areas, highly-populated areas, really valuable areas, where the taking of the land is going to be expensive and where, you know, digging up a public road is less expensive. So, or where you're depriving a community of preserving its historical integrity. So, in Bridgeport, there's an area called Little Iberia. It's being developed as we speak. It's where the Underground Railroad came to a head in Connecticut. It's vital to preserve, absolutely vital. United Illuminating hasn't even considered that it's, it would be problematic to put monopoles right to the center of it. They could easily bury the lines right down Railroad Avenue. Both sides of it are prime, prime, prime for putting underground conduit. We hired engineers to come. Those engineers had to be gotten from Canada because we couldn't find American engineers that would jeopardize their ability to get paid by UI or Eversource in the future. And as a result, we had to go to Canada to get somebody who is an expert on undergrounding to come down and give us estimates. Not only did they give us estimates, they told us exactly what kind of wire you would use, and they also highlighted that the wire that United Illuminating was actually putting in their proposal was not a replacement wire as described in the application. In fact, that wire has twice the capacity of what the existing wire does. So, once again, another violation of their actual filing was that they were doing something pretty underhanded and not telling anyone about it. This is just their playbook. And there's nothing we're going to do to change their playbook. What we can do is we can advocate, and we can force them to put these wires underground. So, in areas that are really high-density, that have high population, or where the land cost is really valuable, they should be buried. In Greenwich, Connecticut, they decided that they were going to build a new, I think it was a transmission station or a substation. In, you know, of course, in Greenwich, there is a pretty high price tag on the real estate. When Eversource came with the application, Eversource came with a buried line application, their alternative was above ground, but the actual application was to bury the line. The town still believed that there was no need for a substation at all, and that they shouldn't put it through Bruce Park. They were able to get them to put it through Passon Bruce Park to rebuild a bridge. It's Greenwich. It's Ned Lamont's backyard. Maybe there was something to that. But we need to have a similar type of outcome. They should be burying these lines. This is very valuable land. Bridgeport, Fairfield, Southport is no less valuable than Greenwich, Connecticut. And it is absolutely the outcome that we're seeking.
Hi, I'm Jim Harmon. I live in Southport, and I'm certainly in favor of burying as the best alternative. But I do have a question on the proposal to put the poles on the north side of the tracks. There's already a set of poles on the north side of the tracks. Is, do we know whether there's any plan? I know they belong to Eversource, so maybe that's a complication, or I've heard they belong to Eversource. But is there any plan to consolidate this new proposal with the existing poles that are there? That would certainly make sense. Thanks.
Those don't belong to Eversource. I believe they belong to UI. And we did look at those, and the UI wants larger poles that, and does not want to continue to use those poles. They want larger poles, and in order to make them larger, they need to move them further off the Metro North Corridor, which then will require them to, you know, take easements. They want to make them higher so that they can potentially have them further apart. And so, keep using those poles is not part of their plan. That's not what they're going to do.
Paul Gustafson, I live in Fairfield, Connecticut. Question here is, where is this power destination to? Is it for Southern Connecticut, or is it for New York City? Or the Font Shorum Nuclear Power Plan area? My question here is, if it's, power is going to be transmitted to New York, why can't we transmit the lines under Long Island Sound, which is maybe 20 or 30 miles to the destination, rather than digging up private property? We were able to, 120 years ago, put transatlantic lines back and forth to Europe and even more today. Why is the UI looking to take private property to put above-ground power lines? Why can't we bury it under Long Island Sound?
So, when the UI panel of engineers testified at the Siding Council, was one of the questions that came up, which is, you have this proposal to have conductors that allow for the transmission of so much more power than you need, and doesn't it ultimately go nowhere because Eversource is not proposing to increase its capacity once you get into the Eversource system in Westport? And one of their engineers actually told the truth and said, oh, no, we want this to go to New York. And the benefit is obvious. It's called wheeling, and it's utilities getting compensated for transmitting electricity out of state. And you could argue, well, that's a terrific benefit to New York. Maybe New York needs it, maybe not, but we don't. And we're paying for it, and our community is paying for it. And as to your question, I can't speak the Long Island Sound in particular, but one thing I will tell you, I am somewhat stunned 25 years into this, that UI has not developed the confidence and proficiency to want to bury transmission lines. I'm seeing a change with Eversource. I have seen it over the years, and for whatever reason, there is, whether it's simply the engineers that they have, or the folks who work for them, they seem to be averse to burying power lines. It is like litigating against the company that is operating in the 1990s and not the 21st century. It is their mindset. It's unacceptable, but it's their mindset.
Good evening. I'm George Clark. I'm from Southport. I look at a bigger picture. Transportation, the train lines, what, who's responsible for looking at maybe getting Metro North into the 21st or 2nd century and getting our train lines to be as sufficient as they are in other quarters of the world? And isn't that part of the formula of fixing this? We'll put these poles up, or we'll, and that will encumber any ability to ultimately, you know, fix the train system and maybe get traffic on in '95 and get freight onto railroad cars? Thank you.
I'm definitely not a transportation expert. I'm not a power expert either. So, but you get into these things and you start to learn a lot. And one of the things that you learn is, that's a United Illuminating talking point. It's a power company talking point about why it needs to be moved off the train catenary. The train catenaries were rebuilt by and large in the 1960s and into the 1990s. There are ones right outside my backyard. I'd be happy to show them to you anytime. They're made out of galvanized metal. They look really nice. And by the way, they are about five feet wider than their pre-existing catenaries. Those catenaries can accommodate high-speed rail. There is a plan to increase the speed and the efficiency of our rail system. The pinch point is not the, a catenary pole that sits on top of it that carries a, you know, 115 KV power line. So, just take some time, go out, study that catenary, and look at what's out there. You're going to see lots and lots of wires. Many of those wires are cable. Some of those are fiber optic. They have nothing to do with power. You will find the power lines that electrify the trains, and those run right over where the trains run. And then, you will find the 115 KV lines on, currently on the south side, on a pole that comes right off of the foundational pole of the catenary. The pinch point in transportation in Connecticut are the bridges. So, they are the bridges in Norwalk, they're the bridges in Stamford, in Greenwich, that have to be rebuilt, and they're in the process of rebuilding those bridges. That is the number-one reason why our trains run much, much slower than they should. They also had an opportunity to, you know, finish the upgrade on the actual train lines themselves, replacing the wooden pylon structures with concrete. For some reason, at some point, the DOT opted not to do that. It's a talking point. It's not a reality. If we want to have faster trains, it has very little to do with the electrification of a 115 KV line that sits off of a foundational pole on a catenary. Those foundational poles will always be there. So, I just think it's absolute, you know, it's a false equivalent. They've thrown up as a barrier. This is a land grab. It's a land grab. It's a land grab. It's a land grab. And they're grabbing our land and giving it to a foreign entity. And it's our responsibility, it's our duty to stop them from doing that.
I just want to add one point, which is, it is a UI talking point. Oh, God, this will, this will make it so hard to expand our railroad infrastructure because if UI particularly cares about that. DOT does care about that. Connecticut DOT does care about that. And what I want everyone here to know is that Connecticut DOT did not initiate this project. They did not instruct UI to remove their transmission lines. This is being initiated by UI and UI alone. And I am certain if Connecticut DOT thought that there was going to be a significant impediment to our future ability, our future transportation needs, they would have been actively involved in wanting this project to happen. They would have initiated it. This came from UI.
I think I need a step stool here. But anyway, I want to get back to what Steve ended up with, which was land grab, because many of us here are butters. I've personally been contacted by Cornerstone, by email, by phone, and they've left something in my mailbox. It's intimidating. We feel isolated. I don't, because I've been a part of this committee. But I know when I've reached out to the community and these people have said, you know, I got a letter, I got an email. I want people to understand that they are being intimidated, and we don't have to give over rights to our property. And I will continue to deny that, and I hope that everybody who's sitting here, who gets a letter from UI saying, you want to come on your property for soil samples, we'll continue to deny them and slow down the process. We don't need to give over property rights to these people. And as long as I draw breath, I'm not coming on my property. I just wanted to put my two cents in there because I know people feel intimidated by the way they're operating.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that issue, and I'm really glad that you did because I know that there are a whole bunch of property owners that receive communication from UI asking for what is called a right-of-entry permission so they can begin doing some clearing on your land and soil testing and whatever else they think they need for their due diligence on a project that they're starting now, even though they already got the approval. I applaud the town for its communication throughout this. Um, I applaud the town for its communication throughout this um, this battle. And one of the things that I think has been communicated um quite effectively by our first selectmen. Is the fact that you do not have to provide UI with permission to do anything. It's your land. It is your property and it is your choice.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Smeltz. I'm the CEO at Wake Men Boys and Girls Club. And I wanted to say thank you because I think also to understand what the impact in in the the group Sneti. This this town and everyone who's rallying around this. Um, most of us who are organizations that are being impacted by this are nonprofits. Um, sixty percent of Wake Men's. Operating budget comes from film profit dollars. We don't plan for this, right? We don't plan for the extra organizational impact that this has for us. We are impacted because we are now on the north side and being impacted. We don't have the opportunity to become an intervenor. Um, and we serve a large part of the community. I I can imagine many of you can tell me a story about either yourself or your children attending Wake Men Boys and Girls Club. We're celebrating a hundred and ten years this year in the community. Um, and so when we think about what the impact is of that, we are growing as an organization. So this potential impact changes our capacity growth. What does that look like? What does our property look like? How do we serve our youth? And now we're also diverting resources to serve your youth in our community. To do things that we don't have, we don't have the bandwidth for. Um, which talks about the David and the Goliath and sort of how that works. And so we weren't able to get in under the intervenor on the other end. Um, and so now we're, we're potentially in trouble. We serve over three thousand youth. It's not just Wake Men Boys and Girls Club that uses our property. We are the physical education in sight for Southport School. We have other Fairfield Youth Lacrosse. We have a lac- um soccer programs. We have other field hockey programs and you think about all the impact of that. That changes our property directly, um, whether that's capacity growing, whether that's safety. Um, so when you give an easement to someone, um, we have national safety laws and and membership requirements. To Boys and Girls Club of America that um impacts how we, we have to background check any vendor who comes on our site. So if you're giving an access, sort of heartland access, we can't protect and follow the requirements that we are able to do. So just thinking, it's a, it's a little more operational as we're talking about this and I just. I I do want to say thank you again because we um, we we all don't have the bandwidth. And I, and I say this as an organization, say even a a private homeowner, like we're not thinking about this. Um, but there is a larger impact. There is a larger impact to our youth and key community organizations. That are trying to serve the community, the youth, our families. Um, and this is a a challenge for us, right? We are getting, we do have representation. We are working with these years ago. We're very fortunate that we have friends um in the community, but it's, it's a heavy lift. And it's a he- it's sorry, it's a heavy lift for anyone. Um, and so thank you, but also just wanted to share some of the impact that's happening for us and the over three thousand youth. And families that we serve in in growing. We are actually um serving more youth than we did prior to COVID. So that's, that's a lot. We're seeing, you know, sometimes five hundred kids in and out of our doors a day. That's a lot kind of impact if we don't have access to property or capacity growth.
Just, just real quickly, um, I know Wake Men very well, as do many people in this room. And I know that every square inch of that property is utilized. And I cannot imagine a massive monopole going up on your property. I mean, whether there will be one or not. I would say there's a fairly high likelihood there will be, will be one. And that would impact your ability to use that property and to the extent you have. Plans to um expand, you know, a facility outdoors, you may not be able to build another structure. So, you know, and and I, you know, it's not like you want fair value for that. Because the value is in the kids, you know, being able to do their activities. And um, any amount of money is going to be, would be problematic. I mean, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Cody LaGrange. I live in the town of Fairfield. I I guess my question really pertains to sort of the process, maybe six months down the road from now. So I know you understand that the appeal, that's six, nine months. Say you win the appeal in the best case scenario, what then happens? Does it go back to the sighting council? And I guess on the reverse side, let's say you lose the appeal. In which case you got to appeal to another court and that's, I'm going to assume months on end at that point. Does UI, can they just keep building? Does the process just keep, does that train keep going on? So just trying to really understand really next steps following the appeal. Thank you.
Sure. Um, so yes, the it it's hard to predict in with any piece of litigation, how long it will take. I'm using rough estimates. But let's assume within the next six months, we we complete the pro- the appeal at the superior court level. That means everyone will do their briefing, file memorandum of law. There'll be a hearing at which the lawyers will argue to the judge the legal arguments. And the judge has a hundred twenty days under our rules in which to issue a decision. Um, if we prevail, I don't think this is a situation where a judge would remand it. For further proceedings to the sighting council because I think what we are looking at is a gross due process violation. And a violation of PUSA. And I think the only remedy is a reversal. That's, I truly believe that. And I believe at that point, UI will still be in their planning phase for the, for their application. But they'll have to start over. And at that point, things may be very different. There may be real communication with the town as to what their plans are. And there may be legislation passed that changes the landscape. Okay? Now, if the town is unsuccessful in the appeal. And I I think I alluded earlier to the fact that state court judges invariably defer to the rulings of state agencies. Um, that is not the end of the battle. Um, we would appeal to the appellate court in Connecticut. My expectation, if we were to do that, is that the Connecticut Supreme Court would grab the case. As it often does on cases that are either novel or significant to the public. My sense is that if we got that far, it would probably end up at the Connecticut Supreme Court. Particularly because we're dealing with something that has never happened before. We're dealing with the granting of a certificate. Without a design, without any evidence. So I I, if if we're not able to prevail at the superior court level, I do think it would end up at the Supreme Court. And your last point was, well, what good does that do us if if UI is plowing ahead with their construction? I don't think they would do that. Um, I could be wrong. But my expectation would be that they would wait for the appellate process to play out. Because they can't take the risk of our prevailing and they'll already have started spending. Tens and hundreds of millions of dollars on a project that that may well uh be denied. So I I, in my other experience involved with appeals on transmission line cases, very different than cell towers. When we're talking about a transmission line, you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. My expectation is that UI will likely sit tight until the appellate process plays out.
Hi, uh Drew Georgiades, Puritan Road, Fairfield. Uh, thank you very much for explaining everything. It's been um really helpful. My question is regarding your comment that they're building beyond the need now in ten years. And. Can you explain to us, they, they're going to charge us back. They're going to make us pay for this construction that we don't need. Whether it goes to New York or whether it goes to someplace else. So can you tell us how financially it's going to impact us as residents of Fairfield and of Connecticut? I've experienced that with the gas company. I don't need that drainage line, but now I'm paying for it. So if you could explain that to us, I'd appreciate it.
I'll, I'll do the best on that. I can certainly speak to the overbuilding and the, and the fact that there is no electrical need. Um, what United Illuminating in their application to the sighting council told the sighting council. Was that this was merely a replacement project. You've got a one fifteen KV line on top of a catenary structure. And we're just going to move the line and replace it with new overhead poles to the south of the Metro North railroad track. We're not, so that's what they told the sighting council. And then you dig in and you realize they're not just replacing. They are proposing a huge upgrade in the form of um. Conductors are the wires that the electricity is transmitted through. So there are technologies where if they were simply trying to replace the level of ampacity that currently exists. They could do that without needing a hundred forty-foot towers. The 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 lighter the wire, um, the tighter it's, it's drawn, the less of a need for a high pole. Okay? And the less of a need for a bigger foundation and the less of a need for easements. So they could have done that. It's not what they did. They proposed two major upgrades. One is heavy, much heavier conductors. Which when they're heavier, they sag more. So how do you deal with that? You build the the poles up higher. Um, the second thing that they proposed to the sighting council was. You know, we may want someday down the road to go even bigger. So we're gonna, we want the poles to be able to accommodate yet another upgrade. Um, so it ends up being about a hundred thirty percent increase in proposed capacity. Even though they're at the same time acknowledging no need today for added uh capacity. No projected need ten years from now. So that's the frustration on the need front. Um, this has never been a replacement project for UI. That's what they told the sighting council. It was not true. What they are doing is increasing dramatically their level of capacity. So they can transmit electricity and get paid for it. And the more they construct, it 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 comes back that we end up paying for the construction. So it's a, it's, it's um been very frustrating to listen to their talking points.
I I would pigpile on top of what you're saying here. So there there's, there's another element that we haven't even delved into because it's actually. You know, even more disturbing when you, when you get down to it. You're not in Illuminating, doesn't generate power. They don't have any power plants. They simply transmit power. Right? So there's two types. One is the transmission, the giant ones that we're talking about. And the other are the the wires that come down our streets and feed our houses. Those wires are called distribution wires. The transmission wires are a different game. All of it is fed by substations and, you know, um, points where they, you know, divide that power up. So those projects, every time they upgrade those projects, those are called cap X or capital expenses. And those cap X projects get some really juicy benefits. One of those benefits is that the power company gets to pay itself for its own capital. And they get to pay themselves anywhere between eleven and fourteen percent. So I'd just love to see a a raise of hands. Who wants to earn eleven percent this year? Right? Who wants to earn fourteen? So i- and that's just, that's what they're doing. Um. I guarantee you, our top cop, Marissa Gillette, who sits up at Pura. Does not agree that this is a good thing. We know that she doesn't. She's fighting the battle. She is a single person in a regulatory, you know, countermande position. Fending off these utility companies. They get paid to build. The more they build, the more they get paid. So if they need to build a bridge to nowhere, guess what they're going to build? A bridge to nowhere. And that's, that's really what this is in many regards. It's not needed. They tell us it's not needed. They put it in writing that it's not needed. They testify under some sort of oath in front of the sighting council. That it's not needed and yet the sighting council still approves it. That's why we know the sighting council needs to be reformed. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it again. Click that QR code. Send something to your legislator. I implore you, make your voice heard, that you want that legislation through. You want to reform the sighting council. If you do that, we're going to have a chance at our next bite at the apple.
I think we can take one more question at the microphone and then we'll wrap up. And our panelists will be available if you have any additional questions you want to come up and ask them afterwards.
I'm Lou Hume and I live in Southport. First, I want to thank you for your work that you're doing on behalf of the town, on, on behalf of Southport. I really hope the lines get buried. I I came in a little late, so I apologize if you already answered this, but this is a related question about what's happening up at Lake Mohegan. Are those lines owned by UI or are they Eversource? And are those the same monopoles that we're going to be looking at along Southport? Because they've already changed those. If it is UI, they're already bringing in more electricity or trans- uh. There's more electricity going through. So why do, why do we have to have it in South? Why do they have to do the revisions in Southport?
Unfortunately, that that is another instance where the town sort of dropped the ball. Uh, that is Eversource. And Eversource um submitted letters that um they were going to do this. I mean, I think this is much simpler. Um, I don't believe they needed additional easements. They didn't. I I, but um, there was no objection to what they were planning on doing. Um, and they just went ahead and did it and the setting council, you know, gave them the go-ahead. So it's, it's too late. Um, I would say we get a lot of emails um complaining about it. And there may be instances where Eversource overstepped their bounds. If if they actually didn't have an easement um on a, on a piece of property. And we hear about fences being knocked down and trees being cut where they shouldn't have been cut. Um, but we have to, you know, look at the maps and make sure that Eversource is actually sort of. Going a- against the regulations. And if so, probably have some um redress. But that that unfortunately, that's a completely different situation that um. I think part of this would probably be addressed through the new regulations where people would get better notice and more facts.
I would just say you're, you're looking into the future when you look at that project. So that's what it, that's what an easement looks like. An easement looks like a superior right. And that means they, they really don't have to tell you much. They just show up. They dig, they construct, and it's their land, not yours. You get the right to pay the tax on it. So, but it's not your land anymore. It's their land. So if we allow them to take these easements, and I know people say, oh, they're just easements. That's what an easement looks like. That's Christmas future. So we don't have to let that happen. If we band together and we, we stand united with our friends in Bridgeport. And we make sure that we get these reforms through, that we, we appeal and appeal and appeal. We are going to have a good outcome and we're going to force them to bury these lines.
I want to thank you all for your thoughtful questions and comments tonight and the great discussion. I hope you thought it was a good discussion. I want to thank our panelists. And I'd also like to thank the organizers of tonight's forum. Our town communications director, who's been leading the monopole effort out of the first selectman's office. Working alongside of our dedicated volunteer grassroots organizations, several of whom you've heard from tonight. Put on this great event. Thanks to them also. Um, the takeaway from tonight, which you heard from Steve, our voices have made a difference already. And our voices are still really needed for this next phase of the fight. So we would love it if everyone here would communicate with your state legislators. That is our three state reps, Representative Leeper, McCarthy, Davey, and Kit, and State Senator Juan. We've made it really easy. You can snap the QR code and. Use as Steve uh mentioned, you can easily send with one touch of your mouse. An email to all of those legislators. They do count the responses that come in. And it's really important that we stay unified in this effort. I also want to mention something, an important upcoming event on May thirtieth, which is a Thursday. Seven thirty, in the same room, we're going to be having a follow-up meeting with our state legislators. So their session ends on May eighth. Whatever's going to happen legislation-wise will be resolved by then. So on May thirtieth, we're going to have them here for a discussion to talk to us about what was approved. Voted on, vote not voted on, and what shape that took. You can sign up also at the tables in the lobbies to stay connected with Empowering Fairfield. And if you have. And if you have any additional questions, feel free to mix and mingle with the folks in the front row or the panelists and just get some additional information. And please, by all means, we had about 150 people here tonight, some of whom have left. Please let your friends and neighbors know that their voice really matters. Even if they don't live in a property, on a property that abuts the train tracks. If they shop in downtown, if they go to Whole Foods, if their kids go to Wakefield. If you live in Fairfield, you will be affected by this. So thanks for your presence and your support.